Can call this meeting to order? Please call the roll.
Bird, Henson.
Here.
Coho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Inkstrom.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
There are no changes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A Ames Economic Development Commission, A D C, first quarter report.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm distributing copies of the first quarter reports. Everybody in the audience tonight, let those get around and I'll hit the high points on the report. Just to refresh everybody's memory, we were successful in our efforts to get some additional funding to support owner occupied repairs for folks that make less than eighty percent of the countywide median. We have three full applications in, another four that have submitted almost everything, but anticipate we're going to have a number of applications that the E D committee will need to score here after the first of May. So again, those are due on May first. We've been very busy on the prospect front and we'll hear more about that here later. Workforce housing tax credit applications, I'll be here at both council meetings in May to present resolutions to support a number of workforce housing applications going in for projects here in the city of Boone. Remember, this is a market rate rental projects, but really a nice tax credit program to help keep those affordable. Again, they are market rate units, highlighting the BDEF project that the council supported during the month of March. Please report that the catalyst got submitted today. So we have a catalyst application that'll be considered under the current funding round. We should have a groundbreaking soon on Kate's Landing, which is the Kating project over in West Boone, Fox Point. I know there's lots of interest around the Fox Point project and hopefully we'll be doing a dedication of that event before summer. We continue to be engaged in a number of workforce things here in the community and around Boone County. We have statistics on the backside related to our, our job board and our marketing efforts. I point to the unemployment rate, we are up a bit over last year. I've highlighted the career fairs where we are promoting our job fair. So that's always a busy time for our offices in the spring. We developed some new flyers to be used for Jump Start Boone, the downtown program in BDEF. And so I think those are helpful to have those available to talk about. Highlighted Representative Pienstra's visit to the school to talk about Boone Edge and the people's ribbon cutting. So Dan and I are both here tonight. If you have questions about first quarter, we're glad to answer any questions you might have. Again, it's always our pleasure to have an opportunity to work with the city staff as well as the elected officials. We've got a lot going on in the community and it's fun to be a part of it. Let me off the hook on the report.
All right, no questions? Thank you, Brenda. B, public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the Story Street Downtown Millen Overlay project. Are there any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? See, none, this public hearing is closed and we have a resolution, thirty-one eighty-three, resolution approving the plans. Need that motion for that.
Approved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
C, public hearing for the consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the Boone County Convention and Visitors Bureau and the city of Boone, Iowa. Are there any written comments?
No, I'm sorry.
Are there any public comments?
This is for that kiosk out at by the welcome train.
Thank you, any other comments? See, none, this public hearing is closed. We have a resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
D, public hearing to consider an agreement with Boone County concerning property located at three fifteen State Street, Boone, Iowa and one hundred and seventeen West Ninth Street, Boone, Iowa. Are there any written comments?
There are.
Are there any public comments? See, none, this public hearing is closed. We have another resolution.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
William- Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
E, public hearing for the consideration of adopting a fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Are there any written comments?
There, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? See, none, this public hearing is closed. Yet resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. See, none. We move on to number five, which is reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration and Employee Relations Committee, Williamson.
So report.
B, Public Safety Transportation Committee, Elsa Beck.
We have two things tonight. One of them is to discuss requests from citizen for dust control on Five Mile Drive in Boone. Fair joy.
Sure, I can take that. So we've had conversation with the citizens that live out on Five Mile Drive about the dust out there. They've asked about dust control. Wayland has worked with them. Your Public Works Director has approved that he's okay with it with some stipulations and Wayland, go ahead.
This section of Five Mile Drive has been under a little scrutiny on service and what we do and dust control and I'm trying to maintain it as minimal as possible to keep the dust down for residents. I'm all for approving the dust control for this section, but understandably, potentially I may have to maintain it for safety sake and safety factor. So that that might come into effect, but I'll probably just get ahold of you, Tom, if I feel it's unsafe or something like that, that I would.
Tom, do you have anything?
Yeah, Tom, I'm in on Five Mile Drive and, and the residents on Five Mile Drive are willing to pay for the dust control. So, so we're going to spend four thousand bucks to control all of our dust, okay? I guess the way, and I'll be with this way on, why I understand oiling the roads and dust control is you want to do a minimum amount of grading and maintaining because it mitigates your dust control. So, which I think brings up Wayland's concern that when the road does get rough and does need maintenance and, and the city is required to do something from safety standpoint. What's going to happen if that mitigates the dust control that we put down? I mean, is the city going to try and do something in the interim or are they just going to let us eat it? So, that's my question.
Go ahead.
I had never been in this situation. Right now, generally when dust control is put down, it's on a road and it holds for the season and we come back, you know, possibly October, right before seasonal snowfall, we can lay it, maintain it. I, I would say that we need to prep the road as, have you figured out which contractor you want to work with yet?
Probably busting, busting oil a lot of it.
I think tomorrow morning, if you provide me with their contract, having our discussion here, I'd like to discuss with them what they want for. Some companies want me to blade the rock off to the side of the road, then put the dust control down and then we're looking to spread rock into it later and it mitigates the dust from that environment. I, I don't foresee it being a big issue or I don't, I don't see you losing your benefit of putting the dust control in there. I, I can't promise anything because I've never had this exact situation.
So I think there is a risk of that, Tom, depending on it. Obviously, if it comes to a real safety hazard, we're obligated to do something with it, but I anticipate that if that occurred, that, that Wayland will have a conversation with you. But there is a risk of it.
So will this be a yearly thing that you guys are going to want to do every year? Is that what you're thinking?
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
It's not how this year goes. I can't convince the whole neighborhood to say yes.
Yeah, no, I just, I just worry that if we get big holes in there where, you know, it gets washboard really bad, are you going to be back in here, you know, saying, hey, their road's not getting maintained due to the dust control, you know?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah.
So there's a risk.
Okay.
It is, it's gotten washboardy before. I, I, I can't promise anything, you know, I, I will work with Tom.
I just think that there might be a trade-off here to where it's not going to be maintained as well as it has in the past. You know, I, you know, I think if, I don't think gravel on there, I think as, last time I was on it, there was good gravel on it. It was just a lot, it was real dusty, so.
I don't think they have a problem with it not being maintained like it has been. The real problem out there is people that go down through there at forty-five, fifty miles an hour.
Yeah.
That's the real problem. Washboard that may alleviate some of that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't, my son lives out there.
Yeah.
And we've had this conversation before and they would be fine with minimum maintenance on that road.
Yeah.
As long as we don't get complaints from citizens that are driving down that road.
That's the information I received from other residents of that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Anything else? Did you have anything else, Tom?
Good, thank you.
All right, so then item number two is to.
That's okay. If, what we need is a motion to approve this, if you so want to approve that the desk, allow them to do the desk control.
I'll make a motion to approve the dust control on Five Mile Drive.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
So now, item number two is to request to appeal decision by the Public Safety and Transportation Committee to deny parking on Hancock Drive in Boone. And that was put forth by Ed. Some background on this, they've been trying to get parking on their road. They've been willing to work with the city to either do just after-school parking, alternate parking. Basically, they just feel as if they don't have enough room to park there when family comes over for holidays and stuff and there's no adequate parking for them to park there. So it was denied two to one during our Public Safety Committee and then they wouldn't feel that, so.
Okay, Mr. Bean.
Yeah, so I appreciate your time and, and listen, we have to say, I'm here to, not just for myself, but for the eleven neighbors that live on my neighborhood. I've handed out a letter here, I'm not going to read the whole letter. It just talks about why we feel that we need to have some access to be able to park at least on one side of our street. Possibly, we are in total agreement that not having parking from like seven AM till four during school hours, Monday through Friday, but then to allow parking at the street for in the evening and the weekends or holidays. And so the reason that I'm appealing that decision is for several different reasons. So I've attached that letter that I presented to them. I also attached a petition from the eleven people that live on my street. The next thing that's in the, in your packet there is a picture of the city of Boone and it highlighted in the purple, I mean, marked out on the, in the streets that are called collector streets. The reason that I was told that our parking was denied on our street was because it was collector street in Boone, which is a busier street, is designed to bring and funnel traffic from the urban areas to a connecting street such as for, for those kind of things. And so here in, in purple, it's all the connecting streets. I want to let you know that. The next piece of paper there is a document that I was presented that sees that recommendations, it's recommendations off the Iowa DOT, that thirty-one feet wide streets be without parking if they're a collector street. That was a recommendation from the Iowa DOT. But on the second page of that, same part of the chapter on table five there, on number eight, it says parking is allowed on one side or other on local and collector streets unless restricted by the local jurisdiction, which would be the city of Boone. Some jurisdictions allow parking on both sides of the street. When that occurs, each jurisdiction sets their own rules and allows for proper clearance. Number nine there, though, it wasn't highlighted, it says for local low-volume residential streets, two free-flowing lanes are not required and a twenty-six foot or thirty-four or thirty-one foot roadway may be used where parking is allowed on one side or the other respectively. For higher volume streets, it's required to continuously flowing traffic lanes of thirty-one foot, which is the width of our street. Roadway can be used with parking on one side or the other, just depends on, on approval from the jurisdiction. On the next one was, is I printed off for everybody here, the Iowa DOT law, it says governing bodies for municipalities shall have justification and control of the municipal arterial systems and municipal collector systems and municipal services. Set systems shall comprise the municipal street systems in this state. So the city has control. My point to you is I'm asking you to put yourself in person. Eleven neighbors in my neighborhood, you have, you have a covenant to where, a covenant in our, that requires us not to have, I can't have a garage in my backyard, can't have a drive going down the backyard to my garage. I can't add additional concrete onto my property for additional park. I don't have an alleyway that runs behind my house. Almost every other street in Boone, Story Street, other streets where there is no parking have either an alleyway that runs behind their house, has off-street parking to be able to pull in and park on the back of their property, or they have usually a side street within about two houses of them, where a side street's going away from that or to arterial lane where there's parking allowed on those streets. And so within a couple of houses down, you can go and park. Our only option for my house is eight houses down, at least about a walk and a half, two blocks down to Park on Jackson Street. Okay? And then in order for the people to walk back to my house, there's not sidewalks on either side of the road. So in the middle of winter time, because, and there's not sidewalks because of a grandfather den thing for the golf course, not that put a sidewalk in their little pass through between the two sides. And so because of that, there's not even sidewalks. So in the middle of the winter time, people would have to walk on the road in order to get back down to our house. Also too, I went ahead and I went around to, so the last piece of paper here that I'm presenting out to you is the collector streets in Boone, Iowa. So the reason I was told that we didn't have parking is because of collector street in Boone, Iowa. I went around and I measured all the streets and I also wrote down here for your record whether there are a lot of parking or not. You'll notice our section is thirty-one foot wide and there's no parking on either side. Jackson Street, which is collector street running all around, it has parking allowed on both sides, thirty-one feet. Lynn Street, it runs straight down for, down to Cedar, which is a collector street, it is twenty-eight foot wide, it allows parking on both sides. The Cedar Street that runs all the way over to Mamie is twenty-eight foot wide and it allows parking on the east side. So the street that runs, Boone or Green Street, that runs all the way down from Eighth Street all the way down to, I have a list there, Green Street down to Woodland is twenty-six foot wide and has parking on the, on the west side. The street that runs straight to the height, to the general off of Mamie Eisenhower Street down there, that's a collector, that street's twenty-six foot wide, has parking on both sides. So every other street in Boone that's a collector street is narrower and allows parking. So I'm asking for an exception, I'm asking us to come up with some solution. I've also heard that there's, when I was at the safety meeting, they said, well, maybe we need to just deny parking also on Jackson. What that does for our whole neighborhood then is eliminate all of our options for parking. We can't have a connection group, have additional people over. We can't have a baby shower like my wife had and invite twenty-two people to it, different people from different towns coming into Boone and no ability to park, having to walk two and a half blocks, three blocks. So I'm asking the city to consider the consideration.
Thank you. Put it back over to Kyle to discuss the committee, having the committee meetings and anything like that.
Um, yeah, so that was basically their thing of it. I guess if the city would like to speak, they surely can. I think a lot of it was safety reasons, why people wanted to deny that. But do you want to take it over and?
You need some there. Well, Mr. Bean is incorrect in a lot of the things he said. I did go by check, some of the streets in the twenty-six, twenty-eight foots are on spot there on some of them. I was only provided three at the last meeting, came up with multiple more, brought a lot of those to our attention. I don't know, we need to address those or, or what we need to do. Basically, the conversation that we had and the reason why I don't support parking there is because an area that you feel, like you said, number nine, if you feel it needs to have two lanes of full-moving traffic where vehicles can't stop and alternate in a timely manner or in good control, that's what I felt that street was. I think it's more than the low-volume street that he think, or he was suggesting that paragraph. Now, Marshall Street that he cited before between Park Avenue and Hancock, is a stop sign two blocks away, people are preparing to stop and already doing some of that. Ultimately, he is correct, it is a jurisdictional choice on your guys' behalf.
I just have a question when you're done. Is this a street that has really increased in traffic with the elementary school opening?
I would, I would say it's really increased with traffic.
I know when I've been on it, it seems like it is a busy street even, I mean, just throughout the day and, and that is one of the main flows right out to the elementary, correct?
Some, some of the other streets that he had cited before, also parking was allowed before some of these things came into that area. Before the schools came in, parking was already allowed there. This, this has always been a no parking. It was designed, no parking by the, with the SWAT funding, the DOT funding that this road was purchased for, with no parking and no, no brick mailboxes, stone mason work on it. Also, a couple of things to note in that area is the school would be considered a commercial industrial area. So they would, acceptable would be thirty-four feet. So that area would be covered with no parking and I feel very strongly about that. Residentially, you do have the option, if you would like. One thing that I, I think I want to point out and other staff wants to, is there, you know, potentially more, more traffic between Airport Road and any developments through Airport Road into Hancock into town there? That's, that is our paved road between Airport Road and town now. So that's, that's all I've got to think about.
Chief, I'd agree, there is, since the, since legislative bill, there's certainly an uptick in traffic on that road to the point where I know we, we've talked about potentially looking at South Jackson as well at the next Public Safety Meeting, I think that's a motion was made last time. We have the second from Southeast Lynn to South Jackson is parking on both sides. We are having complaints about the traffic parking there during school hours, people are trying to get down to Ledges Elementary and, and leaving Ledges Elementary, there's just a lot more traffic.
And we've discussed parking both sides, it's not parking both sides, it's alternate. And, and when, when somebody fails to move their vehicle to the other side, that, that causes major.
Right, and, and as was discussed earlier, some of these streets are alternate, but they are snow, emergency snow routes, so there is no parking. First Street, for example, that goes towards the middle school, that one is an emergency snow route. So between April fifteenth and November first, April fifteenth, there is no parking on those roads, period. After that, it's alternate parking. And on this list, I know that the South Marshall Street from Hancock to First, it is not allowed from Hancock to Lincoln Street. And then from Lincoln Street north to First Street, there's no parking on either side. So there are roads in Boone that are residential that do not allow parking on either side. So this is not, this is not an outlier for that and there is a lot of traffic on them.
Is there any process where if someone is having, I'm going to say, a graduation event or a big, you know, event that they could request that they would have parking and wouldn't get ticketed? I mean.
At this point, at this point, our code, there is that, there is no process for that in our city code.
Ledges, Ledges Elementary did a STEM night this fall and they asked for an exemption and, and Public Safety denied that exemption because coming from staff, you know, they said whether it's getting an emergency vehicle through there or anything else, it's, it's hard to police that when it comes to that.
There's a reason why, yeah. Yeah.
Anything further, Chief?
Sure.
Anything else from staff on, on this? Any other council comments?
I would, that's all right. I would just like to say that we, you know, at our last Public Safety Meeting, we put it on the agenda to talk about all the collector lines as a whole. I don't think we need to make one exemption for one area. I think it's something that we've neglected in the past to adjust our parking situations as collector lines change. You know, I wasn't around when those, when, when they put those ordinances in effect. I think that's something that I did add to the Public Safety Meeting and to be honest with you, I think we could almost table this until we further talk about this at this, at the Public Safety Meeting on what we're going to do with collector lines as a whole.
Thank you. The other comment?
We have to be consistent no matter what we do.
Exactly.
Do we have a motion on the request for appeal?
I'll make a motion to deny that appeal.
Second.
Any further discussion? Or call. Okay, please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Coho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
No.
Williamson.
Yes.
Inkstrom.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On paper, on Public Safety. Okay. Security Utility Committee, Inkstrom.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that we did change that meeting to the third Monday, right, four-thirty before city council meeting. We didn't have as many people as normal this time tonight, so just to let everybody know that, other than that, nothing else.
Thank you. D, Economic Development, Mormon.
Um, yeah, we met on April fifth downtown at Mrs. Slobberworth. That's a new business on Story Street and we just, tonight we approved the downtown incentive grant for that building, that five thousand dollars. I think she's got it all together, so it's going to be a nice addition downtown.
Good.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Sixth Department Reports, Building Official, Dave. Clerk Finance Officer, Andrea.
Just wanted to give a quick update on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five health insurance renewal. Last year, we went from United Healthcare, the IPEP Plan to I G H C, Wellmark. That saved us three hundred thousand dollars, if you guys remember. This year, the renewal came in at three point two eight percent overall and that's just on the health, health insurance portion. Dental came in, dental vision, blacks all came in as zero, so there's no increase in those. However, the federal government increased the HSA minimum deductible allowed. Ours is currently set at two thousand five hundred dollars. The federal minimum is now three thousand two hundred and this only affects those that are on the family HSA plan. And then that is only two employees currently. So I, what I would like to do, when we do the resolution for raises, increase the city contribution to cover that extra seven hundred dollars. Currently, we put so much money in. Currently, we put so much money into an HSA account for our employees to help cover the high deductible on the HSA. And I just wanna help cover that, so you'll see that coming here within the next month or so. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Uh, C, City Attorney, Jim?
No report, Your Honor.
D, Director of Public Works, Waylon?
No report, Your Honor.
E, Library, Jamie? F, Park Director, Mike?
Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of updates. We, at Franklin Park, we have a playground project going on. We've been trying to raise matching funds from the city. And, uh. Two, three weeks ago, we were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars from the Boone County Community Foundation. And we've got ten thousand from Leonard Good, ten thousand from a private donor, and one from the Pratt-Fenton Charitable. Which puts us at fifty thousand dollars matching. So we're, uh, the board was initially thinking of a play structure, but they're kind of leaning towards possible. Some sort of a, uh. Well, it's a, what's the word I'm looking for, a obstacle course and swing sets. Trinity Lutheran has playground, Sacred Heart has playground, so we want to do something a little different in that park. Milwaukee Parks Equipment will be arriving soon, probably within the next couple of weeks. So that'll have a very nice play structure. And the Boone Parks went into an agreement with Boone National Little League. They were looking for a spot for a young, it's kind of a in-between age group for baseball. Which requires seventy-foot bases and, and want to do it on the high school field. And we felt that that would not be a good mix between baseball and softball there. So the board, our board agreed to let them use our north ballgame. They can make the changes, do whatever they need to do, but we play Monday, Wednesday, Friday for this year. Fourteen dates for the summer, and we'll see how it goes for any further use of that field, so. That's all I have.
Oh, great news, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, is that, is that the fifty thousand that we said is, uh?
The match. Match that what they raised.
Good.
Okay, Engineer?
Thank you, sir. Resolution thirty-one eighty-seven, accepting engineer's statement of completion. Final pay request for the fire station bay addition project, we talked about this at the last council meeting. This is the final payment that will be released thirty days after approval from the council. So I'd ask for a motion to approve resolution three-one-eight-seven.
So move, second.
Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Koho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsström?
Yes.
Anything further? No, sir, okay. Uh, Agent Public Safety, Chief Adams?
Yes, Your Honor, with the green space getting ready to fire up for their year. On the agenda for tonight, I'm looking for a motion to approve their alcohol license. Normally, we'd have a traditional form, but because of their facility and how they run it, we don't have a traditional inspection form. Chief Weevil and I will work with them later this week and the next two weeks as they get ready to set up and make sure that they conform to their boundaries of their license. So with that, I would ask for a motion for approval.
Move to approve said license.
Second. Please call the roll.
Koho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsström?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Nothing further, thank you. Chief Weevil?
Yes, sir. Um, I have an officer who's been selected to attend drug recognition training through the state of Iowa. Their training is three weeks total, two weeks in Des Moines, and then one week in Jacksonville, Florida. And this training helps with drug-related OWIs primarily. Right now, there's no one Boone County that's certified for that. DOT pays for everything thankfully, including the trip to Jacksonville, Florida, other than food and his wages. So, but I just need a approval for out-of-state travel.
So move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsström?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Koho Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I, City Administrator, Phil?
Thank you, sir. So we have in front of us resolution three-one-eight-eight, approving the application of Daisy Brands to the Iowa Development Authority's High-Fauling Jobs Program. I will note and I hand it out, there's one change to the resolution. There's a requirement of the state as part of this application to add the language that's highlighted there up on the screen. And for you folks, it's down under section two. The once-enlisted value exemption is forty-nine million. That's the resolution will be voting on this evening. Dan, do you have anything? Yeah, you could, okay. Uh, so to give you an update, so the state will make their decision Friday morning, I believe, on the nineteenth. Uh, this project is seven hundred and eight million dollars. That, that includes the cost of the building as well as machinery and equipment. Uh, it's important to keep in mind that that is not the assessed value for tax purposes. That will be determined once the building is completed and then it'll be assessed. Uh, for me, a shout out to Boone County Economic Growth, they did a great job on this, they helped us, they were partners in this project and very helpful. So I think they deserve some recognition along with A and DDC, they did a great job. Uh, just one other thing on the infrastructure in the resolution. So this is infrastructure that staff had looked at before that we were going to be doing improvements as well. And it certainly needs to be done for this project. An example of that is the lift station on Airport Road. That was going to be done regardless, so that's part of it as well, but just for those, these infrastructure things have been discussed with staff prior. Uh, that is all I have, other than if there's any council or mayor comments before you make a motion to approve the resolution.
Just to clarify then, um, we've been talking for a couple of years now about making improvements to the water treatment plan and the sewage treatment plan. And upping our game a little bit, that we didn't have to turn down industry when they came to us. This kind of just gave us the nudge that we needed to get it done. I think our capacity will exceed what Daisy will want. So we'll be able to expand even far, or further. So like I said, sometimes you just need a nudge to get something done, and this was the nudge we needed. So, um, yeah. I too would like to thank Boone County Economic Growth Corp. They really stepped up their game on this. A and DDC, naturally Brenda and Dan and your entire staff, you guys did fantastic work. I know it took a lot of oxygen out of the room. And for Joe and Andrea, they worked tirelessly on this. This was not a, they were working a lot of overtime hours to get this done, and I really appreciate their. We should be really happy we have the staff that we have.
I, I second that. I, I, the word I keep hearing people say is it's gonna be transformative for Boone, so it really is.
Well, and this council too, and Mayor Steins. I mean, this started months ago when Mayor Slite was still here, and everybody's been on board with this and supported it. And so I appreciate everybody here too, supporting this effort. It, it takes a team to do it, so.
I would like to make the motion.
Can I?
Sure.
Um, so again, I, I would echo Councilman Mormon's comments. On the infrastructure, that is gonna benefit all of the ratepayers when we get that done. So that's an important investment that we want, have been wanting to make for a long time. Um, in addition, we have an absent member today, and he asked me to read a statement from himself since he cannot be here to vote. Um, so this is from David Byrd, council member one. And he says, "Good evening, as a member of the Boone City Council, I'm writing to express my solid support for Project Daisy. Which is scheduled for discussion in the council meeting tonight. Due, due to prior commitments, I am unable to attend the meeting in person. However, I did not want to miss the opportunity to voice my endorsement for this fantastic project, project between Daisy and Boone. This project is more than just the construction of a new facility. It is, it is an amazing opportunity for not only the city of Boone, but also the entire surrounding community. It has the potential to enhance the quality of life for all. Cooperative relationship will be a benefit to both the community and the company. We are thrilled that Daisy will choose Boone for the expansion of their facilities. Uh, and I am certain that Daisy will be glad as well. We extend a warm welcome, and we are excited to have you as part of this community. I would also like to thank those who worked tirelessly on this project, city staff, elected officials, A and DDC. Iowa Economic Development Authority, the state, and Daisy. Best regards for a bright future, David Byrd." So I think that pretty much says it all from my perspective as well.
Yeah.
This is going to be a transformative thing, as was said, and it's going to change the trajectory of not only Boone, not only Boone County, but the entire region as well. And I thank everybody for your work on this.
I will second Lynn's motion.
Thank you.
We're excited.
Please call the roll.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsström?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Koho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on these items. Unless a request is made prior to, after the time council votes on the motion.
We'll approve.
Second. Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ingsström?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Koho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Number eight, ordinances, there are none. Number nine, mayor's comments. Again, you know, we just went through a whole portion where I had that comment, but there was the opening ceremonies for the Boone Little League this, this weekend. Uh, there's a huge crowd that came out for that, and I was privileged to be able to welcome them to their new season. Of both learning the sports of softball and baseball, but also learning life lessons of teamwork cooperation. Uh, and sportsmanship along the way. And the same day, we had our second annual pride party down at the Green Space. And there were a lot of great turnout from there, and a lot of positivity for that, and I was privileged to be able to address them as well. Those are all of my comments, council member comments.
I just have one, Councilman Byrd and I have received several emails and, and correspondence from people in the community about the chicken ordinance that we. Discussed at the last meeting. Uh, we would like to hold a kind of a town hall meeting on April thirtieth, and I'll pass that around. Um, up here in the, in City Hall Auditorium. Uh, it's just an informative meeting, it's not pro or con, it's simply information gathering from people in the community. Um, like I said, I've had several people reach out to me, including several realtors. Concerned about this ordinance and what it will do to their businesses and stuff. So we're just gonna gather some information, I think it's information that is, will be valuable to everybody here before we get into the discussion of the ordinance on this. Right? Um, so council members are more than welcome to attend, I would encourage it as a matter of fact to attend. And hear what the community has to say about it. I'll be posting this on Facebook, it's gonna go up, e-verify, it'll be on the city website, the city Facebook page. Um, and I'm gonna post some posters around town in the next couple of weeks. If you guys have any comments or want anything added to that, just let me know, but I'm gonna do that when we get back from Washington.
Thank you, yeah. Just to be clear, this is not an official meeting, so you're not required to attend.
Nope.
Um, and it is an informative meeting driven by the public. And so we don't have to have an agenda put out or anything like that, it's not policy oriented, it's informational purposes.
It's an opportunity for anyone to speak.
Yep.
On the topic.
Absolutely, it's, it's all them, I'm, we're just gonna moderate.
Right, whoever wants to share.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments?
Go, sir.
Okay. Number eleven, closed session pursuant to Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five, one C. To discuss the strategy with council where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely prejudiced or disadvantaged the position of the city in that litigation.
Master. Take a motion to go to closed session. Again.
Please call the roll.
Be your hand.
Ingsström?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Koho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes. Yes.
Williamson?